Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. We are now live.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. So we are a little bit behind per our agenda. So we are picking back up with topic number six, Working Draft Information for Federal Contracts and Resolution in Order. What we have for us today and will be added to the packet, in addition to needing to have discussion about our board guiding principles, the form of the resolution in order, we've just received three additional documents as well. So if we could just pause discussion for a moment and figure out a course of action. Ms. Angie, thoughts?
So I would, good afternoon Chair and Board of Commissioners. I would suggest that John L. Bell and Lucy Hamer start the presentation and the overview. I will be working with staff on printing out a document that shows the version you, in your board packet is the version that your board discussed last meet, that's last week. The version that is at your desk has not been published as for discussion. Staff will be, has been working with our consultants on getting a redlined version, including a request was also made, a version that indicates who the comments have came from. So staff will be working on that and printing that out so that you can have that for your review when we come to the RNO discussion.
Which, given that we only have an hour, I'm going to call time on the presentation in a half an hour. Okay? At five past three, and then we're going to switch over to the RNO. Great, thank you.
Great, and I know John L. is also trying to join us. Has he been admitted to the room?
John L., unless you turn your camera on, we won't be able to see you. Can you hear us?
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. It's not giving me the option to turn on the camera, but I know we're short on time. So Lucy, let's go ahead and continue.
All right, thank you. I see slides up for federal funding update. I don't know if that's-
That is the only presentation that's in our packet?
Okay, great. So yeah, I'm going to walk you through the outreach efforts to date. So as you said, you've got three documents in front of you. And so I will start with the one that says memorandum at the top with the spousal's letterhead, and the subject is county employee listening session number one.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And so last Monday, July 7th, we hosted the first listening session where thirty-nine people participated. And so we broke them into small groups and had conversations with them, questions focusing on needs within the county, what impacts are you already observing within the county? What about impacts you may or may not be observing with CBO partners? And what might you need from county leadership in this moment? Or what would you like them to know? And then asking them, what would you like to see in this resolution? And so some key takeaways that we, we observed were they appreciated leadership's presence quite literally in that moment in the listening session. Administrator Angie attended, as did Ms. Sajoner, to talk about what access and opportunity means and what's really going on in this moment. And they really appreciated that clarity. But they did voice persistent uncertainty and ambiguity in terms of how to go about their work. And so some specific examples they named were, you know, we're updating our strategic plan, but we're not quite sure how to approach this section because we're not sure what language we're allowed to use. They also talked about emotional labor and isolation, folks describing saying, you know, we're holding on to a lot of uncertainty, a lot of trauma, a lot of grief on behalf of our CBO partners as they navigate this. There is also reports of internal mistrust and some tension. And so we highlighted hierarchical tension, meaning some folks have the perception that, you know, they're not hearing information. That information is kept at that executive level and isn't always making it down to the rest of staff, as well as folks feeling like they don't talk about what's going on much, and they're not sure how to talk about it even amongst themselves, meaning kind of the political climate and the conversations around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so just again, some discomfort navigating more politically charged conversations. They also highlighted again that a desire for clarity and not just reassurance, and folks saying, you know, an FAQ, something I can point to, again, how do we talk about this with our direct reports amongst each other and with our partners? So again, both internally and that external dialogue that they need help facilitating. And they had a call for increased internal dialogue, you know? They really leaned into the listening session, and they recommended, we want more of these, even regularly. They also said more diverse channels of communication, so email, internet, listening session, newsletter, stand and drop in hours. Now, if I have a question or I want to know what's going on, who can I go and when can I go to get those answers? Which brings me to, someone proposed the dedicated chat box or email account, which a few folks seconded as an idea, specifically saying, sometimes a community partner has a question for me, I don't know how to answer them, and I feel like I need to give them an answer really quickly, and I don't know how to always do that, and I don't know who to ask. And then again, this stress on frequent communication, it really does come back to this communication. And so folks acknowledging that that landscape is evolving really rapidly, and they fully acknowledge that, but the sense that at times leadership is waiting for a perfect answer instead of communicating more frequently, more consistently. And so they said, no, we understand the guidance might change, or, you know, the answer might change, but, you know, let us keep up with you as this goes, because the silence is being interpreted negatively. And so some of those key questions, again, that participants were posing, again, is what language is okay to use? That was the most persistent question that we were encountering, is we just don't know what words we can use. But also, you know, workplace questions of, you know, am I still allowed to have things like pride flags, BLM flags? And they did have questions, you know, more administratively, saying, you know, is Washington County unique in this response? So they're seeing headlines, you know, what's Multnomah County? What's the city doing? And, you know, trying to compare, how's Washington County navigating this at the same time? But also questions too of, what's the state doing in feeling that disconnect? And so other folks too, pointing out that, saying, I don't have the answers, but I am here to listen because I want to be supportive in this moment, but I don't even know what that looks like. So what can be my role in this? You know, what, how can I be more supportive? And so we did also ask them about externally facing, looking at their CBO partners, what impacts are they observing, if any? And so again, CBO partners experiencing their own uncertainty, and so uncertainty about funding especially being the major, major impact and how that would impact their services and programs. But they did report that trust is really strong, specifically between CBOs towards the county, that they've built these relationships over years, and that they are reporting that, yes, CBOs are talking to me openly, candidly, vulnerably about what is concerning them. But we flag it, you know, at, at risk, because what do we always say about trust? How long does it take to build? And then how long does it take to break? And so staff really wanting to lean in on making sure that CBOs are communicated with, and so that there isn't a vacuum and silence where CBOs can interpret that as either a hesitant, hesitancy to communicate or an uncertainty of how to move forward. Staff said they perceive that CBOs are wanting to see that moral leadership. They want to see the reassurance that rights and access to services are protected. And so that, again, this is how staff is interpreting what CBOs are telling them. And then finally, again, this need for public messaging, of wanting to ensure that, again, any silence isn't interpreted as indifference or withdrawal, but that CBOs want to communicate with the county in that collaborative space. And so again, some of these questions that are outstanding from, from staff members that they have been hearing from CBOs, how will county programs be prioritized? How might impacts differ between county, city? Are other grant opportunities going to be pulled? Because they're already reporting that they're seeing them pulled. And will language access requirements be the same across all contracts? So just those really high level key takeaways that came from county staff when it comes to approaching the resolutions. So from the listening session, staff saying, you know, say what needs to be said. They don't want to see the language overly sanitized. Sanitized was their word. So not wanting to withdraw from, from equity, but wanting to be direct about it. They also want to name the impacts and values clearly. And so again, articulating how equity does remain a priority, and that this resolution does not take away from that. And, but that they also want to see that balance to ensure that the resolution stays evergreen. Again, that was a word that they used to say, not overly prescriptive and responsive to this moment in time, but that it is something that can go beyond this moment in time because it does affirm values, it does affirm equity, it does affirm civil rights, and those concepts, again, being evergreen, to borrow their word. And then beyond the resolution, they, they want that foundation for action. So how they will continue engaging with each other, with community-based organizations, in recognition that the work doesn't end with the resolution. Within the resolution, they do want to make sure that both staff and community are centered in it without, within it as well. And so this concept of well-being coming up within staff conversations, understanding that, that applies to community as a whole, it applies to community members as individuals, as humans, and it also applies to county staff who are, who are working in this community. And so again, really wanting to center that well-being. And then finally, that the leadership by example. And so they, they did call for the board for executive leadership, for county leadership, to stand by the county's values and really centering the commitments that the counties made on equity. And again, they, they warned against that silence or that ambiguity, and so wanting to be in front and make a clear statement of, of the county's position on civil rights. Some folks did ask questions like, well, if DEI is legal, why do we even need this? You know, and so there was great conversation in terms of being able to bring people up to speed. That goes back to the previous point of appreciating county leadership being there to connect those dots. And so they also asked, you know, can the county use language from other agencies? What have other people have done? Some folks asked, how much can we explicitly push back against this moment? And then why not just revise the equity resolution? And so still some procedural questions of, of what's going on, but identifying those as opportunities for learning. Any questions on, from the listening session?
I, I just have a couple of points. On page three, urgent need for public messaging. CBOs have noted the absence of public facing materials or county guidance to help people understand what is and isn't changing. The only action the county has taken, the county board issued a board statement. Beyond that, we've taken no action yet. So I'm having a little bit of a disconnect here between what their expectation is to date. We haven't been silent. We haven't done anything to say anything about yet. We haven't issued the board statement. So that's, I'm, I'm just having a little difficulty getting the full message there.
And I think it will help, you know, to start to address this question would be, you know, we have the, the CBO survey results too, that might shed further light on at least the perception of communication, because that's really what we're getting at here, is how is it being perceived by the community and community members? And so the takeaway is there just being, how is the, the statement landing, right? Or how, what do they expect? And so I think there are some key takeaways for what, to help answer that question of what are they expecting? So we can get into that.
Okay. Then under the recommendations from Espousal for the county resolution, on number one, the second sentence, they want the resolution to reflect the reality of what communities and staff are experiencing. It's multiple realities. There isn't one homogeneous reality, is my thought there. And then on number two, they want the resolution to show that county values aren't conditional on political shifts, and that the resolution should be evergreen. As, as a Board of Commissioner member, I know that all legislation stands unless it's revoked or replaced. So there's a-
Yeah, I, I think it, it's an important note on listening sessions. I always believe people show up with the information that they have at that point in time. And so I think what, to me, what I find valuable is that employees showed up, and they were asking questions and giving their feedback. And we are in a point of just, things moving fast, things moving and changing each day. So I'm actually not surprised by some of this information. Keep in mind, too, we have a freeze on federal grants and contracts. We've just gone through, ended our last five years of budget cut. So there's just anxiety and curiosity. And so I fully expected this to come out with more communication, more clarity, what's the direction we're going, going through, going to be moving forward. Now is our responsibility, my responsibility in my service to you, supporting staff, like how do, what is the management, what is the manageable communication stream back to staff in giving clarity on what the next steps is on grants and contracts?
So the recommendations for county resolution, I'm realizing it isn't specific to the words of the resolution, but how we move forward with it.
Yep.
Okay, very helpful, because that wasn't the lens I was wearing at the time. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do any other commissioners have questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have something to add to the, or, or bullet point, the urgent need for public messaging. I can relate, and that is a bullet point that resonates with me. When we were, for our board, when we were going through the first position of the equity resolution, I myself was, I got a text message on a Sunday evening from one of the sitting commissioners to alert me that there is a resolution in my inbox. So I can relate to the community not being aware of the public facing, because it wasn't also until Monday that it got posted. So I think there is a truth to that bullet point of what people are sharing, because I myself went through that experience. So I don't think it's wrong. And I think I, I'd like to get an answer to some of these questions that are posted here, questions by the participants. Am I allowed to have flags in my workspace such as Pride or Black Lives Matter? I think these are questions that Washington County has to grapple with. If we don't pursue the route of litigation, we are going to have to comply with the executive order. So what does that look like? So I, I look forward to getting to the answers as well as the community, and the, I mean, staff as well as the community. So a lot to answer and a lot to research here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything to add, John L.?
No, I think you've captured it well. And Madam Chair, as you indicated earlier, I, I think, and, and the administrator did as well, you'll hear some additional feedback from the community listening sessions. And I always take any level of feedback as a positive. In, in this instance, it was really helpful because folks really were leaning in and sharing with us both their perceptions of what is being said versus not, as well as their questions, which I think is just an imitation for continued dialogue.
Freedom point. Can I just mention, from an operational perspective, the county does have a flag policy in place. Any raising of a flag that is outside of the United States flag or the state flag is done after your, in conjunction with your board, a board proclamation. So the board proclamation, then in essence, that follows with the raising of the flag. Plague etiquette and plague rules should not be taken lightly. So we had worked through what that policy and process would be four plus years ago. I will also say that the federal government continues to make proclamations coming from the federal administration. So at this point, I do not see any change to flags or proclamations.
Yeah, I was just referring to, I think there is an executive order around pronouns and gender ideology and LGBTQ. So I think there's, the problem is deeper than that.
Well, and just for the matter of like confusion or questions, curiosity, both within the community and also here with staff, I just feel that it's important that I continue to say what the facts and the position is of the county, so that we kind of cut through any of that confusion and questions. Okay, moving forward to the employee survey findings. So that's the other one with memorandum at the top. So this report reflects the first fifty-five responses received. The survey is still open, and so we will have a more comprehensive final tally at the end of this week, because there is the second listening session tomorrow. So that'll be kind of our final touch point in person with staff, and we will again encourage them to complete the survey. And so we will have a, again, a more comprehensive report at the end of this week. But this, this report reflects those first fifty-five responses that were received. And so we did see, let's say, more diverse responses here than what we heard at the listening session, which is to be expected. And part of what, what inspires us to ensure we have more than one avenue to participate is to, to get those other views. And so some major themes here would be, there are some polarized views on DEI and government mandates. So some folks feeling that DEI is either illegal or unfair in itself, but others supporting DEI and equity approaches. There was also largely a report on observing impacts to community-based organizations. Again, many respondents saying that they are observing those already, also reporting that they see reduced engagement or hesitancy to access service on the parts of community members. And then recommendations for the county's resolution. Again, we, there was mixed response here. So the responses were split. A portion of staff calling for reaffirming that legal compliance and, and really grounding it in that civil rights work, but while some saying, no, pull back the equity resolution. And so we can actually get more into the numbers moving forward on these next pages, because I am watching the clock for us. And so I do want to make sure we kind of get into how these, how these positions really broke down. So moving to page three, responses by question. And so question one, how are the executive orders potentially impacting county operations? Forty-five percent saying that they are observing a negative impact on county operations or staff morale, whereas twenty percent saying they're seeing positive impacts, saying lines along, it, it's actually reducing waste, you know, it's a good thing. Some folks did decline to respond, but twenty-two percent saying, I'm not seeing any impacts right now. Moving to question two, where do you see executive orders conflicting with- Moving to question two, where do you see executive orders conflicting with relevant state statute or state administrative rules or county policies? Again, many respondents saying that they are observing conflict from the executive orders towards state or county policy. So 47% of folks saying that. 24% of folks saying that state and county should align to executive orders. With one response saying, I see the state being defiant was one pull away. So that, that, more of that sentiment towards the conflict. A, a solid number, 18% declined to respond to this question. And then 11% said they just, they weren't, weren't aware of any conflicts. Neutrally saying, I, I don't, none that I know of. But again, that 47% saying that they do believe it conflicts with, for example, the sanctuary status, as well as again, the DEI programs and policies within, within the county, or again, the state laws for inclusion. Moving towards question three.
Of course.
These people that declined to respond.
Yes.
Did they respond to other things or did they communicate other things? I mean, I don't understand why you'd get on an anonymous survey and then decline to respond.
Some folks answered every question, some folks answered some.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for the question. How are executive orders creating challenges for your CBO partners and community members you serve? So again, 53%, this is a majority of people observing negative impacts currently, saying people are hesitant to access services due to the uncertainty about legality. 11% saying they're observing positive impacts, arguing that executive orders are making things better. 14% currently saying they aren't observing any impacts right now, and 22% declined to respond to the question. And then final question, what do you think is important to highlight or include in the new resolution that's being drafted? And so 46% giving a sentimental, supporting a resolution that affirms the county's values, so leaning in. 20% saying it should remove the considerations for equity or repealing the equity resolution. 20% giving a more neutral tone resolution, so neither explicitly affirming equity, but not revoking it either. Nine percent expressed skepticism that a new resolution is needed or helpful. Kind of a sentiment of what's the point or this, this won't address what's needed right now. And with 5% declining to respond. And so again, we're seeing a much more diverse input here than what we saw from the listening sessions. But I think it is of absolute equal importance to, to note where people are in terms of their interaction and their sentiment towards the resolution. And across the board, anywhere between 40 and 50% of people though, aligning currently to the, to the path of this civil rights centered resolution that does not step back from equity and does not take steps away from the equity resolution or efforts towards inclusion. Questions on this one, or anything to add, Jono?
I'm trying to compare these two, just from the standpoint of one is in person, one is anonymous.
Yes.
This one you have graphs.
Yes.
Presumably 55 people in each graph.
Yes.
And this one has 39 employees, but you don't ask them the same questions.
Cause it was a listening session in which we just said, tell us what you, tell us what's on your mind. We did give them questions to prompt them in conversation, to direct it around the resolution as well as impacts around community. But we really did take it as an opportunity to also say, what questions do you really have right now? In order to address this ongoing process, because this was on, the listening session was on July 7th. And so we really didn't want to limit their input in terms of what they wanted to share with the county.
And there, and there's no crossover, so any of the 55 didn't participate in the, in the
There can be crossover.
There can be employees who took the survey and attended the listening session. Correct. The questions that were asked in the listening session of employees, the, the first memo, it's, says county employee listening, so wait a second, I'm a little confused, sorry. The second memo is the county survey, but they were reflecting input from county-based organizations that they work with. Right? Neither of these memos is about the CBO listening session.
Correct. That will be your third discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just, I want to soak, so for both commissioners, that's why Espousal put them into separate documents. Because the listening session, there could be crossover, there may not be, we don't know. And both were stressed that both formats were anonymous, so that employees could freely share what their perspectives were.
So in the listening session, I, I guess what I, where I was thinking was that an anonymous survey may be an opportunity for a person to be more candid about what they were thinking versus in a listening session, if it's, we're all sitting around here, you know, that I may not say what I'm thinking. So it was that kind of the environment?
Well, and that's why providing both modes for getting feedback was important.
Yeah, I just saw different, I just saw different responses, quite frankly, under the anonymous survey than I saw in the listening session.
And the one thing, maybe it's hearing, it's just not jumping out at me. Is it, do you have some here, what were the questions that you posed in the listening session?
They were largely the same as from the survey, except we did have an additional question for them of what questions do you have for the county about this process or about
Great, I can find it. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay.
One more minute?
Yes.
So we're going to go to this long, long one here for the community-based organization survey results. Similar to the staff survey results, this is still open, so this is a preliminary report based on the responses we had at that time. And so we did ask for demographic information. And again, this, this was collected both anonymously and voluntarily. People did not have to provide their demographic information if they did not want to. But we did see a decent amount of diverse, diversity in this demographic information, both on sex, gender, racial identity, sexual orientation, and then whether someone identified as having a disability. Now, the questions we asked CBOs were very different than what we asked staff. We really wanted to get a sense of what impacts are you experiencing and what, what do you need right now? And so 100% of respondents saying that they have been notified of a federal funding change, either delay or an elimination for their fiscal year. So across the board, everyone said yes. The majority of respondents saying that those delays would have severe impacts to their organization's ability to operate. So that's 53%. Do they anticipate any unforeseen costs that might not be eligible for reimbursement due to delays or having funding eliminated? Again, overwhelming majority saying yes. And so we asked them to give us a better sense of what specific concerns in this moment are they thinking about? And so most saying funding reductions. And as a point of clarification, they were allowed to check more than one box for this question. Navigating conflicting guidance, concern about changing mission or plan, difficulty in adapting programs, changes to eligible activities, uncertainty about compliance, and increased administrative burden. And so all of those options, obviously, people, nothing was identified as not a problem whatsoever. There wasn't other box too, that they could check and give more detail if they had wanted to. And so some of those open-ended comments to, to clarify, you know, some of these responses. And so folks saying it's impossible to comply. And there is risk on CBOs that work feels targeted because they, of who they serve, whether it is historically discriminated against populations or immigrants, or even concern about culturally specific services. Getting to this next question, this touches on what you spoke about earlier, Madam Chair, in terms of expectations around communication. And so we did ask, how satisfied are you with how the county has shared information with community partners about the federal requirements of grants or other federal funds? And so we see 33% saying very dissatisfied, 40% somewhat satisfied, 6% very, and then 20% neither nor. And so to kind of illuminate what they were hoping for, ideas of how to improve communication or what might they need in terms of communication or what they would like to see. Regular in-person meetings, someone proposed maybe quarterly. Communication, just continuing to let them know. And this, a little bit aligns with what staff had said too, about, we understand you might not always have a perfect answer, but consistent communication is helpful. Having letters with constant updates, again, the timely and transparent, consistent communication. It, it is, it is that recurring theme. So any questions about this survey? Again, it is still open, so we will have an updated response for you at the end of the week. Yeah.
Say 15 people completed the survey, is that 15 different CBOs, 15 people representing three CBOs?
I can actually get to that figure. There is, there are some from the same organization.
I'm just trying to I, I'm very surprised at that question of how satisfied are you with how the county has shared information with community partners? Because I guess I think we've done a pretty good job, so I'd like to hear what your thoughts are.
So I think communication is always hard. And if we ever get a survey back that says, you are doing it so well, please don't do more. I will be shocked, because I've never seen a survey.
Well, okay.
So I, well, I'm just, I want to kind of ground some of this. So typically, when we do ask employees or CBOs, we always get the request for more communication. I think the reality of where we're at, I'm not surprised with that feedback, because we have frozen the signing of grants and contracts. So there is a high degree of uncertainty that they are holding, like what does this mean and what does this mean for our operations? I also want to underscore a point that Lucy had made earlier, I believe, is that we have CBOs who are already being impacted by the loss of federal grants and contracts. So there's, I, I'm not surprised to see this. And there are options, I think, that we can pursue and will need to pursue to have more frequent in-person kind of meetings. We have had one in-person listening session, if you recall, that I held with CBOs earlier this year, relative to immigration and ICE. Part of this, as we move forward, we have to be realistic with how much capacity we have to. And so you'll hear me and Janelle and Lucy have heard me say this. I am not comfortable over committing to something that we can't carry through, which I feel like is going to be well over a year process. And so I want to be really thoughtful about what we're honestly committing to. But I'm not, I'm not surprised to see this right now, given the uncertainty.
Spending over $500,000 a week to try and sustain these. I'd like to think that we'd get some consideration for that as a commitment.
I don't know that they realize what our burn rate is. Can I ask a question about the participant characteristics? Of course. This is titled, because I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the audience. So this is a survey of community-based organizations. So it says here, 11 respondents were CBOs partnering with Washington County, and then four respondents were Washington County community members. I'm having trouble understanding what that four is all about.
So we built in the questions to, to have folks self-identify whether they were officially a CBO partner, whether they were a community member, and whether they were Washington County staff in the event that the link was shared out beyond where we wanted to share it out. So we wanted to make sure we could filter those results.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Of course.
Are there any other questions on that third piece?
Good call on the, the survey being shared out, because it actually circled back to me. And I thought, I don't think Tanya wants me to take this.
You said that this is in process, this one?
Yes, this is, both surveys for staff and for CBOs are still open.
And when will they not be open?
End of this week, my recommendation, because our final touch point for staff is tomorrow. So we want to give one more push to encourage folks to participate.
Thank you. Great. So where we're trying to get to is a review of resolution and order for us to have a final directional thumbs up with that's what we want to move towards. That still has to go through legal review. But we're trying to get all that settled, so that we can have a version to go in the packet in the publication this Thursday, plus or minus a day, in order for us to consider it Tuesday night, being mindful of ACRE meeting Monday night to see that same thing. So we have, I have a recommendation for additional, potential additional information in our board direction. But what I think is most important is going over the resolution and order. So at this juncture, unless there was something more from Espousal for now?
None from me, anything from you, Jono?
Nothing, nothing more for me. We're, we're here for whatever you need from us.
It's quite a rush. It's a marathon. So Ms. Angie is passing out a document that will be included in an update to our packet today. So I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Angie.
So the, thank you, Chair and Board. And I will also ask that our consultants from Espousal help walk through this too. So the board had reviewed an RNO on July 8th. This is an RNO that includes potential discussion points for the board based on where, where a change has came from or what group or body. So I'm going to turn it over to Lucy to walk through this. This is not a typical red line, because we added the comments. So the comments point back to where the change is in the document. So Lucy.
Great. Thank you. Would you like me to just take it from the top and we can walk through? Okay. So this matter having come before the Washington County Board on July 22, 2025, and it appearing to the board that whereas, so that's the first change. Previously, it had had the, it appearing that language a lot, so I changed that per your direction. Whereas that the government of Washington County is of and for all residents, workers, and visitors in Washington County. And whereas Washington County affirms, one of the foundational principles of the United States is that all residents, workers, and visitors are treated fairly and equally under the law. So this inclusion of fairly being from ACRE, expressing that equally landed as if it's a one-size-fits-all broad brush rather than responsive service. And so including the word fairly.
I think we're going to have to be very, step by step with this. Commissioners, are you okay with the inclusion of fairly into our resolution and order?
I am.
Okay.
And, Chair, before we go further, just as a matter of the record, any of the changes that you discussed today have not undergone any legal review. So pending any of these changes, this, your changes would then go through a legal review.
Correct.
So, and that is listed on top of the document, but I just want to make sure that's part of the record.
Yep. So if I could just verbally suggest that version one was our July 8th version and is in our published packet I'm looking at right now. I'm going to call this July 15th working draft version, version two. Coming out of our discussion today will be a version three. That will then go into our legal review. And our goal is to land on a version four that goes into our published packet for consideration for next Tuesday. That, are we all on the same page?
Just matter of process, I just process, we will collect your comments then on the version three and make sure that is
Just matter of process, I just process, we will collect your comments then on the version three and make sure that is posted to today's packet.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yep, I just.
Yes, thank you, absolutely. Okay. Let's keep going. Fairness and, there's a second fairness and equity?
There is a second fairness.
Everybody square on that? Okay.
Okay. Uh, next paragraph is new from the previous version, um, but was, uh, inspired by, uh, the board, specifically Commissioner Fai. Whereas longstanding federal and state civil rights laws, such as the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the Age Discrimination Act of nineteen seventy-five, the Americans Disabilities Act, the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, and the Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter six, five, nine prohibit discrimination and establish fairness and equality of access and opportunity as a foundational legal principle. So the word fairness being inserted from ACRE, but the, uh, remaining portion, um, being inspired by the board.
We thumbs up on that? My only concern is that all of that comes before the First Amendment and the Constitution. So it's the order that I'm not quite comfortable with.
I was wondering what you, because it's on the last page under paragraph two.
I know.
So what, are we redundant?
I don't know, but it is. This is another question that I would appreciate, uh, legal addressing. I was taught in my prior work as a metro counselor and it was a good school of good policy training. Whereas is are the story, right? And the story needs to build. But the true meat of the matter is the be it resolved section. And so if there's going to be legal action on something that the board takes action on, it's really going to be in the be it resolved section. But, uh, so we needed to ensure that the access and the opportunity was part of the be it resolved. Because we're taking action on that. So, but the, the US Constitution, the First Amendment and this section on all of the federal and state is getting at that story of the nature by which we do this work. So we'll. We did the thumbs up already, I'm sorry. We're off of page one.
And Chair, I did hear a suggestion from you to move the First Amendment and Constitution above the section that you just gave a thumbs up to. So do you all want to take action on that too?
Yes.
Okay, so is that, is everybody, okay. So move that up.
I can't distinguish head nods from thumbs up, so just to let you know. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on page two.
All right, page two. So no changes in these next two whereas's? Would you like me to read them again though?
Nope.
Okay, so moving now.
Are my colleagues okay? Okay, yeah. So now we're in the be it resolved, understand the principles, used to be something like concepts of.
Yes, so previously it had been written as understand the concepts of access and opportunity. Uh, it has been recommended to change that to principles per acre, um, saying that it gives a greater weight.
Great.
All right, moving into the definition of access, uh, there was ACRE recommended, uh, additional language here for ability, background, identity or socioeconomic status.
My concern about that is, uh, what the, uh, I'm comfortable with people have, having their identities. What I'm concerned about is the legal nature around the federal government is using vocabulary and, uh, things like, um, gender identity and whatnot. So that's the only, that's the concern I have with regard to inserting this word because I feel like we're inserting, uh, red hot coal in something where we're trying to diffuse this situation.
So can we defer to legal for advice on that one?
We'll, we'll address that.
Okay.
For your board.
But I think, no, I'm, I was.
What I'm saying is I'm not, I'm not ready to insert the word identity.
I'm not ready either, and so I would just, we can wait for legal. But still could come down to, I mean, if the legal says it's neutral, then two of us are saying, no, we don't care for it. So, okay, we'll just leave it at that. Two of us would prefer it not be in there unless you're going to convince us it's okay.
Understood, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay.
Well, hang on, uh, what we had before, so this is just adding another word in there. I'm looking at July eighth and, yeah.
But it's a significant word.
Yeah, well, and what I'm.
Identity is a significant word.
And what I'm concerned about is putting a version in the packet updated today. You know, a version, since I'm labeling this one version two, putting in a version three that has it. Only to have to potentially take it out, so. What did the other two of you think?
It says draft and, um, I think if I reflect on what the, the essence of the conversation was, that identity personalized this so much further than it currently stood. So that's why, that's, that's why I'm, I'm pending legal review would want it to stay in. The, um, and as far as whether it stays in as a, it's, it says draft. We're having an open discussion, public discussion here. And we've, we've deferred to, or I have at least deferred to legal for, um, review. I'm comfortable if it stays in the draft.
And it does say such as.
Commissioner Fai?
Um, I'm okay. It stays in the draft, so I'm, um, yeah, I think, uh, I, Commissioner Tree said it well.
Okay.
Id- identity, I was thinking race and ethnicity, but then sexual orientation. So it, it, I think identity does encompass broader background of one person. So I don't know if we're going to find a better neutral word than identity, but.
Thank you. So a couple of changes in the definition of opportunity. So first seeing, uh, it's the fair and just provision of chances for individuals to pursue personal, professional well-being and growth. The addition of well-being, uh, being a recommendation again from ACRE. And the conversation around that really centering around, um, you know, are people being only seen for what they contribute to society? Or is there a way to acknowledge their inherent worth?
Yeah. The latter.
Yeah.
Great way to put it. I'm good.
All right, uh, again, we have the this principle appearing again instead of concept. We again have the reappearance of the word identity, um, in that list backgrounds, identity or circumstances. And then a point of clarification on the definition that they asked for, meaning ACRE members again. That success is attainable through fair and just support, resources.
Well, you're going too fast for me. Oh, I see, sorry, sorry.
Oh, you're, no problem at all. So just a, an edit on the definition of opportunity that, uh, circumstances do not pre-determine success. Rather, success is attainable through fair and just support, resources and recognition of individual talents, efforts and merit.
Got it. Yep, I'm, I'm. The rather, the rather word, thumbs up on that?
Okay, uh, I still think all the caveats apply on identity.
I just want to say one more thing about this one. There is a lot of discussion on this as well. And, and from my perspective, healthy, robust discussion and ACRE came to, came to this as an agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner. And so moving down, we have a number two here. So commit to ensuring that the public's dollars, um, that we spend the public's dollars in a manner compliant with federal, state and local laws and their amendments. This being actually a recommendation from ACRE as well to clarify, there was again that robust discussion around what statutes are we listing? Why are we listing them and is it an exhaustive list? And so this recommendation to make it clear that, uh, the statutes plus their amendments as well as, uh, changing a little bit of that verbiage there to say such as, uh, the Civil Rights Act and listing those statutes. And so again, making it more clear that these are examples, that the list is not exhaustive.
And I have a question about that phraseology there. For example, the Civil Rights Act passed in the nineteen sixty-four, but there are certain updates or parts, I don't. And I think that's where this and their amendments is. Yeah, is, is that the right language? Like, I'm, I'm looking to legal to make sure it's the right reference language. That's all. Because I think that is reflective of the.
That was the, that was.
I mean, I, so I don't have concerns as written, but I think we need to go back and look at it a little more carefully.
Okay, okay.
With that in the category. Yeah.
It was being holistic in nature.
Right.
Are we thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay. Onward to three B.
All right, so direct the county administrator two. And so we have two additions here, the first one being B. Implement the access and opportunity framework across all operations with a focus on improving outcomes for the most vulnerable and underserved. And so the general idea coming from our ACRE members, um, the word vulnerable coming up both in staff conversations and with CBO conversations at work.
And the board.
And the board. And everyone. And so highlighting that word though, that that to really illustrate that it came from so many different groups, uh, but all choosing to use that same word.
Yep, but we didn't, uh, yeah, I'll be interested to hear what legal has to say about underserved. Vulnerable, I'm comfortable with, underserved. And item C.
Engage in consistent and proactive outreach with community partners to support the counties and partners' ability to respond effectively to community input and priorities. So this was something that was brought forward by our CBO partners or the county CBO partners, um, in dialogue, just wanting that continuous dialogue and collaboration and communication.
So this is where I really struggle with the information that we've been living and breathing for months and weeks. And that is our budget circumstances where people want more and more and more at a time when we're cutting staff. So Ms. Angie, this is going to have to be something that you feel you can actually do. So beyond legal review, I, I just feel like if we keep C in as written, we're asking you to go against something that is one of my tenets, don't overcommit and under-deliver. So that one. In, the spirit is willing, but I'm not sure the body is able, if I can use that analogy.
Well, and I'd also, I'd also ask, is this, is this that balance between, how are we addressing the balance between being overly prescriptive and, and not? So that, that's the only other issue here. And whether or not we, uh, we have, we've talked, we talked about this last night at ACRE. You know, what are the accompanying documents that we do commit to in this, in this time period? Do we have action plans? Do we have other things that might address the CBO's concern here without embedding a responsibility within this RNO that exists in this timeframe and not necessarily into timeframes of the future? That's the other piece I'd bring up here.
Well, and.
Are you talking about B?
No, C, three C. Three C. Engage in consistent and proactive outreach with community partners to support the counties and partners' ability to respond effectively to community input and priorities. Now that latter part, and partners' ability to respond effectively to community input and priorities may not have anything to do with county services. That's another big problem. You've heard me talk about this over and over again. We are a local county government with specific services. We can't fix all societal issues that some of our CBO partners are facing in, in their service to communities, so.
So can I maybe make a suggested?
Yeah.
Edit, given this to provide also greater clarity. Engage in consistent outreach with community partners, period. So I do think that it is reasonable and the ACAs and I have not talked about the how. But if we create a cadence of, um, just convening, whether it's twice a year, quarterly with CBOs, um, just to check in, how are things going, what's going on? To make this beyond just this document, I think that is feasible. And that can get ramped up at other points in time, um, if needed. And we're doing that in some cases already.
So here's what I want to make sure. I want to make sure that it says, direct the county administrator to, and then engage in what I hear you describe is, it's not necessarily you, the CAO, right? It's the CAO and the organi- and the staff organization versus directing you individually. Outside readers might think that three and then with C.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're combining, you're, yes, you're combining, the top says direct the county administrator to.
Yeah.
I say, I, yes.
So, um, so thank you for that consideration. As a reminder, you have to direct reports.
Yeah, I know that.
I know, you repeat that. I'm using, I'm reflecting your words back at you, Chair, right now. Thank you for picking up on that. So I don't do any of my work alone. So you directing me is me then directing the organization to carry these aspects out. Both access and opportunity, the programmatic reviews. I am not personally going to be doing those programmatic review, reviews.
I think.
Alicia Sauringer will be doing that, so.
I think as the, the review for form.
Yep.
We need to look at how we've, we've done it elsewhere so that CB, a CBO reader isn't going to misinterpret it when, when the department managers or the ACAs or somebody else accomplishes that task. That's all. But I hear you loud and clear. So the, the proposal is, is written engage in, um, with community partners, period.
Engage in consistent outreach with community partners.
Yes.
Because then that, that creates then, what is that action plan to do that? And it may have different.
So commissioners, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, with C, I want to go back to B.
Okay, we're going back to B.
So uh, again, I'm, I'm looking at this as being more prescriptive, and we have said back before, whereas the county is committed to advancing policies and programs that enable access and opportunity to all without regard to race, color, disability, status, ethnicity, national origin or other classes protected. Whereas the county remains committed to providing respectful and compassionate service to residents. So we say that, now realizing, using your definition of the difference between whereas. But we say that, and then we come back here and we add another thing to it. When we say with a focus on improving outcomes for the most vulnerable and underserved. We're adding a, another dimension to that. And I'm saying that I think we stop with implement the access and opportunity framework across all county operations, period.
I get it. I'm following you now.
And it'll be interesting to me when you do a little bit of a word check on this, Alex. How many of these words end up on the red list? I think vulnerable will be one of them as well as. Anyway, I just, I, I, I don't like, and once again, we're grinding it down to another perspective, uh, level. And I don't think we need to do that.
So. From my perspective, having the benefit of hearing, you know, ACRE's comments, you know, sitting and hearing, hearing your comments. sitting and hea, hearing your comments, reading the documents on feedback. I do think B, if you do implement the access and opportunity framework across all county operations, as you're suggesting, Jerry, period, then it refers to the definitions above. Um, and ACRE did review those definitions and provide their input on that.
Oh, what your conclusion is?
So, just put period after operations.
Yep.
Because then the definitions that were cited above, they, those, those principles, sorry.
I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm still, I'm still trying to reflect on some of the comments that I heard before. And I, I can get there, but I, I also think that the whole purpose of this, of B, was to underscore what we have been saying, which is our vulnerable commu, community. So, I'm.
Been finding a way to put that in the whereas.
I agree. But I still think it adds a, uh, lower, when we're drilling deeply. And we're getting closer to the original resolution.
Yep, yep. I agree.
Gotta stay at the ground level here.
Yep.
Uh, if the Chair would allow, um, we do actually have an ACRE member here today representing ACRE. Um, and I've, I've done a lot of speaking on their behalf, but I, I would like to provide the opportunity for him to come forward and also speak on some of the, the rationale that I've been speaking on already. But, um, if, if that is permissible, I would, I would appreciate that.
We don't have the time for it.
And besides that, I understand where they're going with this. I understand what the, the intent and purpose, and I could understand why ACRE would propose this. I'm saying it takes us to a new level. And we shouldn't go there.
But could we take five minutes to allow Barry to speak? Because, uh, somebody took the time to join this meeting and took time off from work. So, can we give him five minutes at least to chime in?
Did we give it any of the other organizations?
No.
Times?
I'm sure.
ACRE is our advisory committee, though. I would, I would request the same thing.
Thank you. Um, okay, so before you consider that, which of the agenda items are you striking off of the, suggesting we strike off of the agenda today? I would start with the government relations topic. I would, I would forego the board leadership updates.
Me too.
Senate.
That I would.
We're already past that. That was down to fifteen minutes. So, we need another one.
Or we need to end at five.
We need to end at five. We can do that if we don't do item eight.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have.
I don't know what timeframe we're working towards right now.
I, I'm.
We've blown it out of the.
Because you two have asked. I will say, okay, but it is an exception and it needs to be stated. That's an exception.
And it's an exception to our rule.
Right.
Um, so, I will offer five minutes and stick it to five minutes.
You're on the clock.
Right. Thank you, County Commissioners, for letting me be here today. My name is Barry Johnson Smith. I'm part of the ACRE member. Uh, just to clarify background, it was voted on by ACRE members for me to speak at this meeting. So, there was a formal recommendation by ACRE for me to speak at this time. That's why I'm here today, to be on behalf of ACRE. Uh, so kinda going on Lucy's standpoint, some of the recommendations we have, I'll cover down like top three points from the ACRE meeting was one. We were concerned about the word of equality and making sure that like, a lot of support for communities is not one set for all. And making sure there's language around, making sure that different communities get the support that they need based on situations they're going through. And make sure that's catered in that regard, so we're very intentional in that support, based on the resolution. Um, I did any same thing, not same thing, but had, did any need to make sure we encompass this, a group of like everyone in a different situation, backed on the characteristics. Um, you could change if you want to, to maybe some like characteristics as well, if you're looking to that, concerned about language. But we're just gonna make sure we get very thorough, unlike everyone is protected and not be single and be too vague. Um, and then the last part around, last recommendations around in three B and three C. Um, they were focused on more actions of, one of the things I talked about ACRE was making sure that even though there is intent, it needs to be, make sure that there's some measures of accountability to build trust around this resolution. To be like, okay, if we have this framework, how are we gonna make sure that I follow to make sure the most underserved and vulnerable communities are being, are, are being seen, being heard, and get the support they need? Um, and what are ways to make sure that there are frameworks or metrics to make sure that, uh, the county is actually doing what they intend to do with this resolution and this new framework? Um, so, adding those parts of act, action, I am a little more of a measure for the community to see that there is some element of like accountability on the county's part in this program to make the intended impact. I know that, that can all be said in a resolution, because it'll be very extensive and be too progressive, prescriptive. But I just wanted to make sure, ACRE wanted to make sure there were some accountability measures, because even though everything, there was some trust that was eroded of how things initially went with the equity resolution, um, how like the revoking, revoking of it. So, I just wanted to make sure there is ways, okay, we intend to still support you, and here's some of the way, at least a way we are going to maintain, we honor the equity resolution and support our community.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of Barry?
I have a concern that, uh, as a member of this board, I see the problem differently than I'm hearing it positioned. I, as one of five, am trying to ensure that we can continue to, uh, accept federal funding as we have multiple presentations that articulate. And I believe the changes that we've given a thumbs up to allow us to do that. Our ability to do more and how we go about implementing further possibilities for access and opportunity is really directly influenced by how much funding we have to operate. There are so many things we would like to be able to do that we can't do because we've had to cut budgets and cut people over and over and over again. Which is why I want us to be able to move forward with an access and opportunity resolution with the changes that we've made for our resolution on B and C. Which does not in any way diminish our wanting to do more. As I think the intent of the original equity resolution of twenty twenty gets that. But our access and opportunity is our way in twenty twenty-five, given the current context, to ensure that we are continuing, we are able to continue to move forward with federal funding. And maybe that's part of the story that I'm coming to now is not embodied in our current whereas statements.
So, as a staff member, um, supporting, um, your, uh, ACRE board, I, I think ACRE has been on a journey of learning and understanding the situation that we're in. And I actually appreciate Mr. Barry Johnson Smith being here, and I know he personally has done a crash course into local government and federal law, like really crash course. And so, what I hear from ACRE in this one, like, show me the work as a county. And so, it may, and I feel very comfortable reporting back to ACRE. It may not be the most appropriate in the whereas of this resolution, but then how are we going to show our work and our commitment to the community? And I'm comfortable bringing that message back to ACRE. Um, I'm looking at nonverbals from Barry, and I see him shaking his, like, it's, if it, this isn't the form, then what is the form? And just keep us together on the journey. I also wanna, um, just highlight, um, the work of this body, and I'm not putting this body above any other of our advisory boards or commissions. They have quickly adjusted to meeting every single Monday night to help us through this work. So, I, as this, as your, um, direct report, I am comfortable bringing that back to them for further, for further discussion and continuing to work on this.
Clarification, uh, Chair Harrington, I hear your perspective on maybe miscommunication or misalignment on what your intent with the work with the, uh, uh, access opportunity resolution and like with the community input, ACRE input. But I'm coming from a lens of, I understand the work of the county and the dire issue of the federal funding. But I have a historical background, since I've been like five, understanding systemic oppression. I've been, my parents have educated me so much of how my people have been denied services by the government for four hundred years. So, when I come in from this lens, I'm given perspective of, I understand how government institutions have caused harm to people through their language, said intentionally or unintentionally. So, when I give my feedback perspective, is to make sure we don't make those same mistakes unintentionally and those harms as well. So, I get the feedback on these things. I have seen people say, oh, we changed the framework, but they don't actually get the community more. They whitewash the language. Or they say, oh, we'll get back to you, but you don't get back after you make those changes. So, my framework of having this conversation, I give my feedback is more so, how do we end this moment of chaos, stay grounded? So, to make sure that everyone gets what they need, those people are supported, and those who have been historically immunized are now left in the dust. So, I get a perspective that you're going through with this situation. I do commend you all for extending opportunity, find a, a resolution that works for everyone and make sure you get the funding you need. What I come from perspective of ACRE is making sure that as we make the solution, no one is left behind.
Thank you. Well, I've been left behind because the ACRE materials for that Saturday meeting still are not available, because I just checked. So, I really appreciate that ACRE has dedicated additional time. And I've tried to make sure that I'm privy to those materials. But I've not been given the opportunity to see it. I wish we could do more. I really do.
Chair, on those materials, I will, uh, personally apologize for that and personally take responsibility that those have not been updated yet to date. Um, the, uh, for a matter of the record, the materials that were presented at the meeting are the same materials that were presented at your board roundtable on access and opportunity. That was the slide deck used at the retreat.
So, um. I've, I think we've given the direction on B and C. I don't have, at this point, a whereas statement with regard to us trying to ensure that our operations and our focus continues, B, on improving these outcomes. So, I don't like having to just leave, pull it out. Because I think there's merit. It's what's been on my mind since we've had our discussions June twelfth. I'll just leave it at that.
So, it's, so I believe what I heard Chair Harrington say is adding an additional whereas that addresses the, um, continued focus. Am I correct about that, Chair Harrington?
Yeah, but, um, where it runs in conflict is ACRE as ably represented, um, through Lucy's walk-through as well as, uh, Barry Johnson Smith's articulation is, they wanted something, uh, not just actionable, but something where they could hold us accountable. And, um, I, I think we have to leave it the way it comes out.
I would also say that I believe strongly that ACRE recognizes that they are advisory capacity to the board, and these are recommendations that have been made. So, I've been incredibly respectful. ACRE's been increasingly respectful and has really given very generously of their time and expertise.
So. We have in principle and through wordsmithing our version three of the RNO. I would like to take us back to additional documents, uh, that I've proposed in the packet. And this relates to the, um, the board uh, principles, guiding principles on this. So, we generated a version two, sorry, I need to get on the right screen here. We generated a version two last week. And since then, uh, we've, uh, gotten a various folks, staff as well as commissioners have gotten barraged with questions about, why aren't you doing what Multnomah County is doing? Why aren't you doing what the city of Portland is doing? When I learned of the Multnomah County news release on Friday, I, um, not only read it, pulled it out, printed it, but I also did a deep dive into their packets of the last week. They didn't have an executive session last week on this. It is a result of other conversations. They only had an executive, some, an executive session on labor negotiations. But nonetheless, they've chosen this, uh, with quotes. City of Portland issued, uh, through their county administrator, something on July ninth, and they're in the press today with further considerations. So, um, we seem to have, uh, different board conversations as well as representations in other places, questioning our circumstances. So, what I'm proposing to you today is the possibility of a new K and L items, and we can put those up on the screen if you'd like. K reads, the Washington County Oregon Local Government and its federal funding circumstances are separate and distinct from those of any other Oregon county, and as such, the board must focus on Washington County needs. Item L, continue to utilize our Washington County subject matter expertise, specifically from county administration and county council and their recommendations in making board decisions. So, making sure that, um, we're utilizing our best subject matter expertise from our direct reports. So, um. There's, it's just a proposal. Um, we're not gonna be done. And we're gonna take action on July twenty-second, uh, in order for the county administrator to sign these contracts and attestations. But we're gonna have to continue to look at ongoing contracts, and there may very well be ongoing questions. So, um, we could just stick with version two, uh, but I wanted to put a version three out there with those two considerations and.
Would you read the second one again?
Could we please put it up on the screen? It's in the packet? Package page ninety of a hundred and forty-one.
He's talking about the federal funding guideline principles proposed, work in draft three.
Okay, I can pull that up. We don't need to do that. I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was in the back.
I'm not nuts. Package I downloaded at eleven AM, had a hundred and forty-one pages, and it's on PDF page. The work session packet, yep. Yep.
It's the last page.
Well, if you go to that topic, not of the entire packet.
Oh, that's, oh.
Depends on how you access.
Yeah, I, I, individual. Individual packets?
No, I didn't know.
I'm here, so.
Yep, and you'll see the prior. So all I did.
There we go.
J, K, so J is the last, I added K and L. I didn't do anything funky like put it closer in a place where it makes more sense. Yep. No, I realize we also had all five of us. But, you know, we're on this, this journey where we're at an inflection point of taking action next Tuesday.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it because I look at H. And that's continued to position the organization for the future, which means to me that we're taking in information from all around us, but we are specific to Washington County and we have to do our job in relationship to Washington County.
Yep.
So it doesn't preclude us from learning or being aware of what's happening in Multnomah County or any other place in the universe.
Yep.
I'm, I'm okay with this.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in. I think I was the only one that wasn't okay or didn't give the thumbs up last week. I, I, my position hasn't changed and, you know, my desire for what we're trying to do to get the federal funding is I really wish Washington County would investigate what it looks like, what a path looks like to either join some of these lawsuits that are happening. I, I think we need to be eyes wide open and not be short sighted. If we're going to accept some of these federal fundings without conditions, it's going to have a drastic impact, negative impact to the communities of Washington County. So I don't see what these federal funding guideline principles do other than words on a page. It doesn't protect our community from complying. For example, something as simple as a pronoun executive orders that is part of the grant requirement, let alone the ICE and the immigration executive orders that's going to have something that unimaginable consequences to Washington County. So I think for me, I'll speak for my desire outcome is for Washington County to figure out what we can do in terms of legally to mitigate this issues and, and reach out to King Counties and what does it look like? What does the cost look like to join some of these executive, some of these litigation opportunities and efforts? In terms of the resolution for access and opportunity, I don't see how I, I like, I, I would say thank you to Espousal and Tanya and the leadership team. The amount of energy and time and effort and resources you put into this, it's really well taught. I think it's a great start. But I, I think the piece that's missing for me is how do we accept federal fundings without conditions? I don't see. I'm going to go back and try to figure out what two paragraphs of those conditional language look like. And I hope the board will consider supporting that amendment because we cannot we cannot act U.S. to the federal government. We have to protect our residents from the White House. We have to. And there are opportunities and ways to figure out where, how we can accept our federal funding while also protect because I am a firm believer that if I live in your house, I need to follow your rules. I get that. The federal government has rules, conditions to these federal fundings. But we are a state that is a sanctuary state and we're a home rural county. So I think we need to protect our home rule and our legal compliance. And I think we need to be more thoughtful. Yes, accept this. Before we sign any contracts, I like to have a more board discussions about what are we accepting? What are we saying yes to?
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. I, I have heard what you've had to say from in taking advisement from our county administrator and county council. I don't believe we're in a, my understanding is we are not in a position of trying to practice the and where we get to add conditions to the federal contract and take money.
Yeah, you can.
I understand that you disagree with my understanding. Thank you. So to my colleagues to my right, I've made a proposal on these guiding principles. Would you like to give them a thumbs up for today for moving forward?
I'm good. I, I don't understand your con- conflict though, quite frankly. You're, you're conflicting the principles, which I think help us stay on course and when the, when the landscape moves, we need to have the guiding light, which is our principles. Okay? So we need to have those clearly defined so we don't get persuaded to go a different direction without certain documentation. In regards to your position on litigation and all of that, you've made that perfectly clear a couple of times.
Previous meeting.
We've responded back several times as to why we're not in agreement with that. So I think your case has been stated and I think we need to continue to move on. If you're going to make a, a modif- make a proposed modification to this resolution, I'm concerned about that because again, this is the third version and we've gone through it pretty thoroughly and ACRE has gone through it pretty thoroughly and if there's any more revisions that are going to come from you.
Well, Commissioner Willie, if the county is going to take the access and opportunity resolution and attest to contracts, I think that's putting the community in danger.
Okay, you've stated that.
And then in terms of the principal federal, the principal guidelines, I've stated last week that I like to see conflict with state or local laws, something along that language I propose because I think we need to be protective of our state laws and we need to be protective of our home rule so that we protect our community.
So, thank you very much for that conversation. We need to move on. So we have a version three of our guiding principles moving forward. We have gone through and verbally created the version three of the afternoon of July 15th. It'll be followed up in writing and updated in the packet for the resolution. And that will go through legal review. My hope is that legal will be able to look at that and provide us, working with Ms. Andy as well on the form. So something that is satisfactory for publication. If you're not able to do that, three PM on Friday is our last publication of the week, then we'll have to go out with version three for the time being and then regroup from there. But I'm, I've tried to lay out that course so that ACRE has as close to a version that we'll be considering on Tuesday as possible. So there we have it. Are we all on the same page in terms of summary moving forward? Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, are you comfortable with us just going into topic number seven without a break and then ending the meeting at five o'clock?
I am.
Yeah, I, I absolutely, the five o'clock is, I have a five fifteen.
Okay.
So.
Yep, okay. So we're going to do that. So we're going to call up the various government relations experts to take us through the 2025 State Legislative Session. Thank you to Espousal and to Jerry Bar- Barry Johnson Smith.
Do you want me to give you more space?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we appreciate the whole team. We have a challenging, long agenda, so we will talk fast, smart and clear and get you out by five o'clock. One else has the clicker, so. Good afternoon, everyone. Doyle Senior Government Relations Manager for Washington County and on contract with Clean Water Services. Go down the line quickly.
Commissioners, Carly Silva Gabrielson, Government Relations.
Pablo Neves Valenzuela, Government Relations.
Zocker Con, Government Relations.
Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services.
Thank you all. Pablo, you've got the remote. Next slide. There's too many of us. We have a lot of work to do. So we're just going to provide you a high level.
Too many of you having to sit at the table, squeeze together is what you meant.
So we'll go quickly. The policy question as always is what further information do you need? And in the interest of time, I will write down the questions and we will answer them later. So we can get through this slide deck. So to start with the session summary, this is the long session. This is the budget session. They signed it died on July twenty-seventh, that's, yeah, that's right. That's wrong. It's already too long. June 27th at eleven fifteen PM. So two days short of their constitutional requirement. They had a record setting number of bills and between the two agencies, we tracked a large chunk of them. There are seven hundred and four that have passed through both chambers. I don't have the count on how many are waiting on the governor's desk, so they are not fully fleshed laws until thirty workdays have passed since they arrive in the governor's office, which for the vast majority of them was June 30th. And I made someone else do math. No, I did math. But so we are waiting to see what gets signed, what doesn't. If after those thirty days, those bills are not signed, but also not vetoed, they are passively law.
It feels like sometime in August.
It is sometime in August, but again, because it's dependent upon the day, it is signed by the president, Senate President or the House Speaker and then goes to her office. It can be variable where in August that lands. Just to further some, I also want to make a statement. As you're aware, the county team has had a lot going on this year, not just in the session, but outside of the session. So we did pick up and temporarily use Gwen Baldwin as a contract lobbyist on behalf of the county. So this is my time to say thank you to her. She picked up some really big lifts for the county. We narrowed the scope of her work. So acknowledging that she was able to step in, work and speak on behalf of the county really quickly to get some big things done on behalf of the team and with the team, I just want to acknowledge that. In addition to just the challenges of being people, we had a challenging budget year. This session started out with a glimmer of hope about the size of the expected revenue forecast, but between the changing economy, the uncertainty coming out of what federal funds will be available, that budget conversation got very dark very quickly. And I feel, I think you'll see some of that reflected in the rest of this report. But I'm just setting that groundwork up so that the rest of the team doesn't, you know, have to do it repeatedly. But all in all, we worked really hard and we did some really great things collectively. As you recall, you did adopt priorities for the 2025 session for both Clean Water Services and Washington County in November of 2024, and that document is included in the packet, just so we can all remember where we started. Like every year, we were ambitious. We have goals for this county and the people that we serve and making sure we have the resources to do it. And we also use that document to set up the principles that don't cover the agenda, the priority issues. And we use those principles to assess where the county or Clean Water Services needs to land on bills. So you'll, that is how we guide on those other legislative issues that we'll talk about later. But to start with for today, let's talk about the board adopted priorities and how we did.
Thank, oh, thank you, Erin. So this was indeed a very challenging session and this first priority, I think, gets to the, a lot of the challenges that we faced. Of course, you all remember this one, secure stabilized and sustainable funding for services that the state requires the county to provide. I don't usually like to start with bad news, but I think it's important to address sort of one of the bigger failings of this legislative session and that is that Community Corrections was only funded at two hundred and seventy-nine million when we were requesting three hundred and forty million based on the state's own actual cost study, right? They, they identified that funding level through their cost study as being what was needed for local community corrections programs, yet the funding level that the legislature came through with was only two hundred and seventy-nine million, sixty-one million dollar gap. It's a big deal, right? That means a two-point-four million dollar cut to what was budgeted for community corrections at the county level each year for the next two years. That's unacceptable and I just want you all to know that in the coming days, weeks and months, I, I will be working with my colleagues very closely, members of AOC and, and others who have an interest in this to develop a strategic response, to secure additional funding sometime in this biennium, whether that be through the emergency board or in the shore session.
Just so that I've said it in this meeting, I would like the board to consider a letter to our Washington County delegation on, that has thank you very much, but also here's the true negative impact, right? Because of the two hundred and seventy-nine million, we had to let an additional four real people go out of community corrections with people with incredible expertise. It was very painful. So that's all part of the strategy. I want you to reflect on and come back to us.
Two hundred and seventy-nine is a statewide, right?
Yes, that is a statewide number, but the way it affects us is a two-point-four million dollar shortfall each year for the next two fiscal years. So moving on to a couple of other things here related to stable and sustainable funding. For our law libraries, this was something that we worked on quite a bit and it was another unfortunate outcome. Our ask was for eleven point five million dollars based on an analysis of budget survey results collected from counties across the state. The legislature ended up going with eight point seven million, which was what the state has calculated as their current service level. We believe that that calculation was, was inaccurate, right? So that's another issue that we're going to have to return to. We think that this was especially challenging just because of the dismal forecast, but also because we, our coalition wasn't really rallied behind one ask. And so I think that there needs to be a little bit more organization among connecting our law library advocates to, to be able to kind of present a more united front. And that's something that I'll be working on in this interim period as well.
I still want our Washington County delegation to know the true impact. I did go back last night, late yesterday and reread the document that was included in our June 17th board packet that explained how things seemed to be setting up that day out of the legislature. And these, these impacts are really hard.
Yep.
And I want them to have to face it front and center like we've had to.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. One, another budget line item that I think we actually did pretty well on was with mediation and conciliation services. We also got eight point seven million dollars for that, which was the current service level estimate. But on top of that, there was another bill that passed, SB ninety-seven, that provides the, the county with a tool to increase funding for mediation and conciliation services and that's through marriage license fees. and that's through marriage license fees that had been capped at a rate back in like, gosh, I'm actually forgetting the exact date now, but it was, I think, in the eighties or nineties, they capped it, and it hasn't gone up since, but they've now lifted that cap so we can raise more revenue for those programs with marriage license fees. The next thing I want to mention here is our juvenile department. We get funding through the juvenile crime prevention and diversion programs through the juvenile department. Those were funded at twenty-three point four million dollars, which was what the ask was, so that, that was an area where we fared pretty well. And then with that, I'm gonna quickly pass it over to Zucker so we can talk about S B six-ten.
Commissioners, Senate Bill six-ten has been signed by the governor. This is our bill, which moves authority to decide on grant applications and the Behavioral Health Resource Network Funding Formula from the Oversight and Accountability Council, the Oregon Health Authority. There were also issues with the appeals process, as we found out this year. And so future processes will be guided by state law already existing. So that will help when there are future challenges that may arise in that funding process. The bill has an operative date of being enacted pursuant to January first, twenty twenty-six. And so in the run-up to that being passed, we'll be working with O H A to properly implement the bill.
Turn it back to Pablo. Thanks, Tucker. Yeah, so I also wanted to talk about H B three-zero-six-nine, which changed the deflection funding formula and separated it from the burn formula. As you might remember, that was something that we really wanted. That said, it is important to recognize thirty-sixty-nine comes with a lot of other changes to deflection that are concerning for us. So the main thing is really just an emphasis on prioritizing the number of people who are enrolled in a deflection program over the quality of engagement with those individuals. And our deflection program has done a lot of really intentional work to support people long-term, and some of the changes that are forthcoming with thirty-sixty-nine are really gonna disincentivize that. So that's really concerning for, for our deflection team right now. And a lot of those changes, you know, they'll, they'll be kicking in pretty soon. So they're doing a lot of work right now around program design to figure out, you know, what, how to move forward with these new incentives that have been put in thirty-sixty-nine. And it is something that, you know, I'm gonna be, again, regrouping with AOC, public safety lobbyists and others to figure out if there's tweaks we can do to make this more workable. For example, trying to make it so that program participation is prioritized rather than participants, because, you know, participation, engagement, participants is just a number of people, right? So there's, there's things we may be able to do there that will keep you updated on. And then the last thing on this slide is H B three-five-one-eight. This was, of course, the assessment and taxation funding bill. This unfortunately did not move forward. It had a high threshold, it's one of those bills that requires a three-fifths majority to move through. So getting the votes was, was challenging because there was opposition from Realtors and, and some, some local governments who didn't want to have to contribute to the assessment work, right? And so, so that's something that Representative Nathanson, who chairs the House Revenue Committee, she's committed to coming back to deal with that, and we'll be working with her very closely to address that, hopefully in the next shore session. Next slide.
So commissioners, you'll recall that prioritizing workforce development was a critical need for the county, and especially within behavioral, behavioral health field. This session, we saw a slew of compact licensure bills tried to be passed during the session. One eventually made it to the governor's desk, and she ended up vetoing that bill. So that, this ended up with being a situation where none of the licensure compact bills passed. I'll be spending the coming months learning why exactly those bills did not pass. In addition to that, you will recall that behavioral health workforce funding has been a critical element as to what the county has long been pushing for. Despite asks being located in several different bills, House Bill twenty-two-four was the only bill that passed, which resulted in five million dollars for community mental health program funding.
So before you move on off of this page, I'm left with the question of, okay, we really leaned into the opportunity of building the Center for Addiction Triage and Treatment. The Hillsborough Recovery Services Center is open. The Beaverton Residential Services Building is in its final stages of construction, and yet I'm left wondering if we're set up for success, or if, you know, we're just kind of like showing up to the wedding and being left standing at the altar, so to speak, or the counter, or whatever. So I think I, I accept you've worked super hard this session, and yet here we are. But I'm, I, I look forward to learning more in the next few months if, if our operations will be at risk.
And, and I'm just, I mean, along that same line, some of these seem so like logical. I mean, and so I really am gonna be interested in why. You said you're gonna be exploring the why, I really want to hear it too, because we've got to be able to do some of these licensure, make some of these changes.
Absolutely, and I will say this, you know, the, and I've, I've written about this in previous memos, the state has a real lack of beds for residential treatment. And this session, they put a lot of money towards that. And so each session, I think, is a balancing act between building infrastructure and building workforce. And so what that balance looks like in the long run is still yet to be determined.
Okay.
Was there a cost though to this licensure thing?
No.
It seemed, they were, they've just changed the rules.
There would have been minimal costs.
Yeah, so I'm with you, no break.
But that all transitioned to Carly.
Wonderful. So Slide seven details legislative successes in the affordable housing preservation space, which, as you recall, was a top priority for the board in this legislative session. We can celebrate that three bills were successfully passed that provide critical protections for, and resources for those living in homes that may face regulatory expiration. Notably, the state is allocating for the first time funding that will go towards purchasing units facing expiration. However, it was funded just at fifty-two point five million dollars, and that ask was originally two hundred and five point two million dollars. So tells yet another story of difficulty, difficult funding decisions. Slide eight covers a legislative priority that we had, which was focused on modernizing the approval process for a hundred percent consent-based special district annexations. This priority did not advance in the twenty-five session, therefore, we can look for possible avenues in later sessions, maybe the twenty-seven session, if the board so deems. And with that, I'll pass it back over to Pablo.
Do you feel like you have a good base, a good understanding of why it didn't pass?
Thanks for that question, Chair.
Not that you have to give it here, just.
I would say goal one optics in, in the legislative session of expanding citizen involvement. Thank you.
Thanks, Carly. So on this slide, I want to point out, there was a copy and paste error, and not the full priorities there, so I'm just gonna read it. The priority that the board set was to ensure that any county revenue collected pursuant to O R S five-three-zero-point-one-one-zero that is lost through implementation of the Habitat Conservation Plan is restored by the state on an ongoing basis. Sorry about that. Yeah. So early in session, it really became clear that state leaders were not prepared to reimburse the counties for revenue loss through implementation of the H C P, at least this session. Mr. Willie, I know you were very engaged in the conversation.
Your best effort.
Yes. And, you know.
Hope you still thank you.
Yes, absolutely, no, your, your work is really appreciated in that group. And there were a lot of productive conversations about giving Forest Trust Line counties like ours greater certainty about how much timber revenue we can expect to receive in each harvest cycle. And that's what H B three-one-zero-three was about. And it was negotiated between counties, timber advocates, environmental organizations. And it wasn't really, I think, a really good middle ground solution that, you know, passed unanimously out of the policy committee. But it was not prioritized for funding by the Ways and Means Committee, I think, again, just another victim of a, of a bad revenue forecast, right? Because it, it had broad support, and I don't think that there was enough organized opposition to really kill it. It was really just the, the lack of funding available for, for those projects. But that's something that I definitely want to regroup with, with colleagues on to figure out if we can pass this again in the, in the short session, perhaps reduce the fiscal impact a bit so that we can make it easier to pass in a short session.
Questions backhand, Pablo. What was the revenue cost on this?
So I'd have to, I'll have to follow up with you on that. But yes, it's a, it was higher, I think, than we expected.
Okay, and then we were asking O D F to be required to do a ten-year average.
If I remember correctly, it was five, but I can.
Did that pass?
That, that did not pass, no, yeah, that was in three-one-zero-three.
Oh, it was included in this?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please, I think, yes, okay. So much power, I'm not used to this, but, oh, of course. So, so finally, I gotta share some like really good news, right? I tried to front-load all the bad stuff, right? And so, you know, after a lot of tireless advocacy from our courthouse community, our G R team legislators, and of course, each one of you, we secured one, one point two-five million for the crown.
Happening in the box.
Yeah.
Three times was the charm.
Yeah, and, you know, it definitely. It was a hard-fought battle, you know, in, in a difficult budget year, I think it's really a sign of, of, of really strong collaboration that we were able to get there. I will say, it has not, the, this bill that it was in is five thousand and six, it has not been signed by the governor yet, but I have no indication that the governor would veto this, I don't see why she would, but I just want to flag that because technically it has not been signed.
Yep, Captain Boggy Dance with the caveat, August eleventh.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the date by which, you know, if she doesn't veto it, by then it just becomes law, or of course, she could just sign it.
Okay.
And I just, on the record, I want to explicitly thank Representative Sosa, Representative Chai Chi, Senator Neron Mislin, Senator Solman, and Majority Leader Bowman, and other members of our delegation, because they did a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of getting this elevated as a priority even in a tough budget year, right? So I'm sure, you know, as we enter the planning phase, there will, there'll be updates to this board, and, and as we begin the next stage of advocacy, we'll keep you updated. But with that, I'll pass it over to Carly.
Yeah, and I have the honor of sharing that the rest of our priorities on this slide unfortunately did not receive funding this session. I think the team and I had a very pragmatic view of the budgetary climate and our asks, and we are celebrating that the courthouse planning dollars came through. That being said, we look forward to conversations with leadership in the board to talk about priorities for the twenty-six and twenty-seven session. I also just wanted to flag that even though Walnut Street still appears on the slide, we did ultimately remove that from, from being, from the funding ask because of the federal uncertainty about those matching dollars. And at that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Tracy.
We went one for four on that picture.
One for four.
I didn't zero for four.
Which it was looking like.
All right, great, thank you. So I'm gonna get right to our, we have a number of priorities, as you'll recall. First was our water infrastructure priority, which is one of our highest ongoing priorities for continued investment. Unfortunately, we didn't see the level of investment that we would have liked to have seen. There was no omnibus water bill this session like there was in the twenty-twenty-three session, where we got really excited and finally saw that water was given the attention that we believe it is, is deserved. We did see some investment, however, the lottery bond bill created, included water-related funding for specific community projects and some statewide funding opportunities for water as well. And then we also saw passage of House Bill thirty-thirty-one, which provided ten million dollars for a new program that will help finance infrastructure for specific housing types. So that includes water infrastructure and includes improvements to system capacity. And I know Carly will be talking about that bill in a future slide with a little more detail. In terms of industrial and commercial site readiness, just one bill to flag there, it's House Bill twenty-four-eleven. The bill established an industrial site loan fund and allocated ten million dollars through the lottery bond bill for that. The fund is intended to complement the regionally significant industrial sites program, but these new funds can be used for development and planning projects related to industrial land development, not just actual site improvements. We flagged this bill as we've had some conversations with Business Oregon to make sure that the funding can be used for infrastructure planning that may ultimately be delivered by a special district. And then the last bill I'd want to note on this slide, system development charges. I think this is an area where I feel like local governments were successful this session, as we did not see any preemption or limitations around S D Cs. Representative Mark Gamba did introduce, again, House Bill twenty-nine-sixty-eight, which would have allowed local governments to seek state funding to reimburse for any unpaid S D Cs if that local government voluntarily deferred S D Cs and the developer did not ultimately pay that debt. That bill had been introduced for several sessions now, but still did not pass just because of the budgetary limitations. I also wanted to note the House Bill twenty-one-thirty-eight, which Carly will cover in a future slide. That bill will require the Land Conservation Development Commission to develop model system development charges for residential development types that could be voluntarily adopted by local governments. We will be watching that rulemaking closely and engaging as appropriate with that conversation.
That's not, that would, we, I mean, were we supportive of that?
No, I mean, we, we were not supportive of that, so.
Needed you to reaffirm that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I'm thinking, that doesn't sound like a good idea.
We'll be very curious to see how that is accomplished.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, I was gonna do this in communications, but we're not doing that. An article in the latest H B A Building Home Magazine in summarizing their conversations with Metro on May twenty-ninth raises serious concern for me about this regular evaluation and publication assessing jurisdictional performance. And so I'll, I'll scan this and send it in to staff because I think there's, there's some cause for concern, or at least I have concern, and this is coming from a former Metro counselor as well, about what Metro will be doing through this work, this joint work between the Housing Accountability and Production Office and D L C D. That's all.
Look forward to seeing that, yeah, thank you. And moving into the D E Q budget, this is one of our highest priorities during the long legislative session, as staffing levels for D E Q can have very real impacts on quality and cost effectiveness of our water quality permits and the state's ability to support the implementation of innovative solutions to meet our water quality challenges. We are really pleased that this biennium is providing funding to support continued service and staffing levels, so we're not seeing any cuts. It also provided an additional one point two million in general funds to restore two critical positions that were abolished due to federal funding shortfalls. One final thing to note was the governor's recommended budget had included funding for positions to create, create a statewide stormwater manual in an attempt to see more standardized approaches to stormwater requirements that obviously can impact housing development. Ultimately, the legislature did not provide for that funding in the legislatively approved budget, so that may be a conversation we see coming back in the future.
Well, and thank you for all the work and advocacy that went into those accomplishments. I mean, in following the work being done and highlighted by N Aqua and what we've got teed up for our next permit, I'm just really, really grateful for those accomplishments.
Appreciate that, thank you. On this next slide, water reuse, we are really, really excited. House Bill twenty-one-sixty-nine passed, especially with the budget scenario that we are looking at this session. This bill was our top priority and was supported by a variety of local governments, environmental organizations, and agricultural interests. It will require D E Q to establish an inter-agency coordination team comprised of specific state agencies to identify and address barriers to water reuse and make recommendations. The bill also provided critical funding for the continuation of a water reuse coordinator position within D E Q that was approved in the twenty-twenty-three legislative sessions.
Is O D A part of that?
They are part of that, that was included, yes.
Thank you.
And then in terms of investments to support resource recovery, just one bill to flag is House Bill thirty-two-forty-six that we were engaged in. The bill was introduced to encourage expanded reuse of products or resources that may otherwise be treated as waste, things like nutrients, water, energy. The bill did not pass this session due to the budget limitations, but we'll be working with a coalition that was supporting that to see if it will be reintroduced in the short session. Okay. We'll do, there were a lot of priorities here, trying to go quickly. Housing and water quality, we continue to be heavily engaged in housing production conversations where we see infrastructure impacts or potential areas of conflict with our water quality permits. I know Carly will talk about both these bills on a later slide. House Bill twenty-one-thirty-eight was the governor's middle housing bill. It expands upon the state's middle housing requirements, and we plan to be engaged in implementation efforts, especially related to infrastructure planning and delivery, because it does change our assumptions about density and the. um, especially related to infrastructure planning and delivery, because it does change our assumptions about density and the infrastructure capacity. Uh, as mentioned earlier, this bill also requires that rulemaking, um, on the model SDCs. And then on Senate Bill 974, I wanted to note that this bill creates timelines for reviewing final engineering plans. We did work with the Home Builders Association to ensure that the timelines were workable for our staff and also worked to ensure that language to expand upon residential design exemptions did not create actual or perceived conflicts with water quality permitting requirements, including for stormwater. And then the final legislative priority cover. Oh, wait, no, I did skip, skip the emerging contaminant. Um, we were really engaged in efforts, um, to pass House Bill 2947 this session, so we are grateful that that passed. This was a third time, uh, is the charm bill for us. Um, the bill was introduced by Senator Courtney Neron Mislin and provides state matching funds to Oregon State University to conduct a study of PFAS on soils that have received land-applied biosalts. That study will need to be complete by September of 2028. And then finally, um, just as a reminder, we were seeking state funding to further advance our Western Washington County Inflow and Infiltration Project out in Forest Grove. These are the leaky pipes that are about 88 years old in that community. Um, this project received close to $1 million in federal earmark funding, but not at the level we hoped to see. Um, we did not get the state funding. Um, we are encouraged, we're starting this project using the federal funding we did receive to, um, address the most deteriorated sanitary lines. Um, so we are seeing progress, but we will need additional funding in the future to, um, continue to reduce down that inflow and infiltration. With that, I am done, and passing it, I think, to Carly. Thank you. Now we're gonna cover some of the other legislative-focused areas, and.
The things that came up that you had to deal with.
Some, some minor things, including, um, one of the hot topics from the legislative session and unfortunately, ongoing, transportation. Um, House Bill 2025 was the transportation bill that was negotiated by the Joint Committee on Transportation and later managed by the Joint Committee on Transportation Reinvestment. That bill was amended 28 times, and after some committee restructuring, it did advance to the House floor for a vote.
I laughed at yesterday. She said the same statement, and I laughed.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
The lightest way.
I know, right?
And even after that committee restructuring, um, due to final hour political hurdles and failures in negotiation, the bill did not gain a majority support in either chamber and remained on the speaker's desk at signee die. The demise of House Bill 2025 leaves a lot of unanswered questions about the future for road and transit funding and, uh, what the impacts of layoffs and deferred maintenance are gonna mean for ODOT and local jurisdictions. We don't yet know officially if Governor Kotek is gonna call a special session. Um, there does seem to be momentum behind that to, um, to work on a smaller stopgap transportation bill.
So, what is, I don't understand what the limitations are on when she can call a special session. Can you help me with that?
That's a really great question. I'm turning.
We will get back to you by Friday.
Always on procedure.
I'm just curious. I don't know, you know, is there, there must be a drop before the next session starts.
That's exactly right, yeah. Certainly before the February short session. Um, however, I was gonna say that there are some, some thoughts that maybe the state could find other emergency measures to delay until February. However, um, there does seem to be momentum behind a stopgap bill.
Like not having winter?
We do need our snowplows on, on the road, so I think many Oregonians would.
Just not here in Washington County. How's that?
Um, I, I can share that some of the indications of what a smaller bill could look like would be a gas tax increase of six cents paired with other registration and fee increases. There was some reporting yesterday by the Lamont Week that some lawmakers are, are talking about the momentum, uh, behind a special session. However, we don't yet know what the funding levels for transit would be, or some of the really crucial safety programs, like great streets and safe routes to school. So, irregardless of whether a small bill moves in a special session or in a short session, we really need to think about what our statewide comprehensive solution is going to be that's gonna modernize our system and, um, and really be a robust bipartisan investment like HB 2025 proposed. Deep sigh, I know.
Continued employment, Carly.
It, it's good job security. Thank you for that. Um, I do want to turn to the other thing on the slide, the Toalton Valley Highway Capital Construction Request. I did want to officially just communicate that that was not successful this session. It was an ask of $50 million of the legislature, so, um, a significant ask during this budgetary climate. Despite that not being successful, that does not mean that the project timeline is delayed, so the coalition is gonna be looking at opportunities possibly in '27. Um, I would also be remiss, it's not on this slide, but I did want to mention the, um, the final bill to try to save ODOT in the final hours. It was HB 3402. That was a placeholder bill for the majority of the session until the last day of, of the legislature on Friday. It was amended and proposed a three-cent gas tax increase with 100% of those funds going to ODOT. The bill ultimately, um, it passed the committee, but then it failed to clear procedural hurdle on the House, so it did not advance before signee die.
That was because of the 50, 30, 20 that they took out of it, wasn't it? Was that the procedural part that?
I think that move, uh, led to the demise of the bill before the procedural vote. Um, but the procedural vote was essentially to remove the requirement that the bill be read three times on three different days, which you don't have that opportunity to do in that timeline. Um, and with that, I'm going to, well, actually go to my next slide. Um, I did want to flag, just for clarification, that the, um, the bills that have an asterisk next to them just represent the shared priorities with Clean Water Services. Um, and so now, as I turn to land use, transportation, housing, um, at the top, we do have, uh, Senate Bill 974, which Tracy touched on. I'm just going to highlight that the bill does mandate a final review of engineering plans with 120 days, and, um, we worked with a broad coalition on many amendments, I think there was eight, to really, um, diminish the, the negative impacts to staff. So we are, um, still looking at the implementation of this bill. However, it, um, certainly is much better upon passage than it was on introduction. Also, Tracy highlighted House Bill 3031. This is exciting. It's a new fund that was created, the Housing Infrastructure Production Fund, which is going to allow, uh, small jurisdictions to apply for grants, loans, and forgivable loans to support the, just the development of infrastructure for qualifying affordable housing. And then I just also wanted to highlight, um, House Bill 2138. It's the middle housing requirement bill. Tracy touched on, you know, some of the implications there. Um, our great staff at Land Use and Transportation are looking at the, uh, the implementation and how we need to amend our code to meet those requirements. We can also celebrate that the statewide shelter system bill was passed and did receive funding with $205 million per biennium. We would love that to be more, but it's a good place to start. Um, and then one last bill to touch on, HB 2316. This is a new focus that creates, um, uh, what's being referred to as home start lands, which is an inventory of state-owned lands that can be developed for affordable housing. So kind of a neat concept.
Not, there wasn't much that jumped out at me on that map for Washington County, though.
That's right, Chair.
But statewide, all power to you. Just wanted to make sure my understanding was.
That is correct. Thank you.
Bad.
And then, um, this slide, I just wanted to highlight House Bill 2089. This bill established a process for properties that are foreclosed on due to unpaid property taxes that are ultimately deeded to the county. As you'll recall, this bill responds to a Supreme Court case, Tyler v. Hennepin. And the new multi-step process to sell a property will be managed through the unclaimed property program with the Oregon State Treasury. The process requires counties to provide a notice of surplus to certain parties and requires notices of foreclosure proceeding and others. Um, and those folks will then again be referred to the unclaimed property program. And then also, Senate Bill 179 makes permanent the changes to the recreational immunity status, uh, which is just going to really ensure that Oregonians and our visitors can continue to enjoy our trails for walking, running, and biking.
That was a big win.
Yeah.
Sure was. And then one last one for me. This, uh, this bill, um, 2688, it expands Oregon's prevailing wage law, extending it from construction work performed on the job site to so-called bespoke materials for public work projects that are fabricated, assembled, pre-constructed, or constructed off-site. I can share that the bill did not define what bespoke is, so there is, um, some work that needs to be done in rulemaking to determine the impacts, um, of what this will do to projects in local jurisdictions. No, it was not a governor-requested bill. Thank you, Commissioner. And with that, I'll turn it over to Zachary.
Thanks, Carly. Uh, in the human resources realm, Commissioners may be familiar with this bill, Senate Bill 916, which provides unemployment benefits for striking workers. Um, this bill was a labor of love, I will say. Uh, it was truly a whole one-Washington County approach with regards to this bill. And so I just want to share some love with our Human Resources Department, um, our County Council, the Board, uh, Gwen Baldwin's work on this, as well as members of the Washington County Caucus. We were able to get this bill down to what you see on the screen, because Senator Neron Mislin and Senator Solman really made a strong stand on the Senate floor, uh, to allow this bill to get further changes. And so, the updated and the amended bill that has passed, uh, and I think has been signed by the governor, uh, caps benefits from eight to 10 weeks, depending upon the applicable tax schedule, with a one-week waiting period. I also want to thank the Board for all of their engagement on this issue. Senators and people in the House of Representatives told me about the conversation that you all had with them and how that made an impact.
Thank you for all that hard work.
With regards to Health and Human Services, what we saw across both, uh, the Oregon Health Authority budget, as well as the Oregon Department of Human Services budget, was current service level funding. We saw slight increases with regards to deflection and diversion for community mental health programs, uh, as well as aid and assist and civil commitment funding. Uh, and then with regards to our intellectual development, developmental disabilities, we saw an increase in funding, but we are still underfunded. And so even within behavior health, uh, you know, we've talked a lot about the gap, that gap still exists, and so we'll be working to fill that gap in future sessions for both of these entities.
Well, and I want to give a continued shout-out to not only our Behavioral Health Division Manager, Nick Okone, but also to Mr. McMahon.
Aiman.
Aiman, thank you very much, uh, as, as two key, uh, subject matter experts continuing to work on, uh, the agreement with the state. We've got that reprieve till the end of the year, but there's ongoing work, so thank you very much.
I'll turn it back to Pablo.
Thank you. So on this slide, I want to go through a few updates on other bills that are at the intersection of, like, mental health and, and public safety, right? So the first is SB 236. Um, this was, uh, sort of an omnibus bill, um, that made several technical changes related to deflection. Um, the, the main thing I want to point out in this is that there was, uh, another bill we had, HB 3009, is the next one on this list, and it was introduced by Senator Neron Mislin, and it would allow, uh, us to use funds from the, uh, Jail-Based Medication for Opioid Use Disorder Grant Program in our Community Corrections Center. And, um, that policy got rolled into SB 236, which passed, so, um, so that did get across the finish line. Um, and there are a lot of other things in 236 that are helpful for the county in terms of, uh, reducing the, the workload or, uh, law enforcement. Um, for HB 3576, it also was, uh, a lot of that was incorporated into 3069, but as I mentioned earlier, there's other concerns with, with that bill. Um, for civil commitment, this was kind of a big one, HB 2005. Um, I definitely don't have time to go through all of the, um, you know, all, all of the changes that that bill made, but I'll just say that, uh, by making it easier for, um, uh, folks to be committed, um, it is likely to increase the, uh, workload for our community, uh, or for our behavioral health department, or division, I should say.
Can I go back to deflection for just one second?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if our full Washington County, uh, delegation feels like they are in the know, are in the pulse of the good work that's happening by the Washington County Deflection Team, right? Once, once again, cross collaborative approach. And so I'll just put that out there, if that's another post-session follow-up.
Yeah.
Kind of communicate.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Um, it's a good reminder to, you know, keep them appraised of what's going on here, right? Um, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy, I think, maybe in, in this GR memo this week, I can follow up with more information about civil commitment, because there's a lot in this bill that you probably should know about, but I don't have time to go through it all, so.
Okay.
Go to the next slide. Um, so, the Judicial Department budget. The main thing I want to point out there is, um, I think that number is wrong, actually. Perhaps this is on an older version, my apologies, but, um, we got, uh, about $11.5 million for court security.
Oh.
Um, and that was slightly above the CSL. Um, so, so that's good, because especially as we have our new courtroom that, you know, um, that we, we, we've needed additional court security, so I know that was a priority, uh, for us as well. Um, then looking at the Criminal Justice Commission budget, we got $40 million for, uh, Behavioral Health Deflection Grant Program, right? That's, of course, statewide. Uh, but we requested 46.9 million, so that was less than we were hoping for. Uh, for these other three, they were either at or above current service level. So, uh, 15.5 million for the treatment court grants, um, 6 million for the jail-based, and actually, sorry, this one is, is, uh, it should be about 10 million as well, uh, for Jail-Based Medication for Opioid Use Disorder Grant Program, um, and then 10 million for the improving people's access to community-based treatment, supports, and services. Um, and then next slide here, let's see, a, a couple bills I wanted to point out in this, the assessment and taxation realm. Um, the first one is the Veterans Property Tax Exemption Expansion. Um, they, you know, we, we certainly, uh, agreed with the value of the bill. There were just a lot of questions about the implementation and how to get it right. Um, the bill was, unfortunately, we weren't able to get to a point where the amendments were made that got that bill to a place where we would be supporting it, but it didn't pass, so hopefully we'll get a chance to revisit that and work on, work on it with the sponsors in the future. Um, similarly, there was a, another bill about doing, uh, a property tax exemption for, uh, like, generators and other energy storage, um, uh, technology for business owners, um, and there were a lot of details we needed to work out there as well, um, and that one.
Was that for, like, battery, uh, storage type of units, that type of thing?
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I think it partly had to do with, like, emergency preparedness. That was the, the vision of the, the sponsor representative.
This is big stuff.
Yeah, and he wanted, you know, businesses to be able to have a generator, so if you're a restaurant and you have, and you have, uh, food and, you know, maybe the, the lights go out and everything, and your refrigerator goes out, you lose a lot of your products. Um, so like, having a generator on-site was beneficial to.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, got it.
Yeah, it, 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 that was kind of his vision for it, but it was actually pretty expansive the way it was written, right? It could have applied to a large industrial generator, um, or, you know, something in a data storage center that is, uh, frankly, if you exempt it, would be a, a massive write-off for, uh, for that company, right? So, um, so there were a lot of details to work out there, um, just in terms of it being feasible for A and T, but those bills did not move forward. Um, let's see, so these are the last two bills I'm gonna talk about here. Um, 1051, this, uh, bill basically allows the governor to appoint the state forester who runs the Department of Forestry, uh, rather than having it be appointed by the, the, uh, Board of Forestry, right? Um, there were, there was some feedback from AOC about making sure that that person had expertise in forestry. Uh, that was incorporated in the final version of the bill, and it did pass.
Yeah, there was two versions to that that, um,
Right.
were not very pretty on that, so I'm glad to see that got fixed up.
Yeah, me too. Um, yeah, and then I guess the last bill here, um, it's HB 3940, and this, uh, generates more revenue for wildfire prevention and response, uh, through a new tax on oral nicotine products. Um, and that, I just, the reason I want to point that out, it doesn't create any work for Washington County. It's, you know, improves wildfire response and all that. Uh, but it's important to recognize that previous versions of this bill, uh, would have created a significant burden for our A and T Department through a new property tax mechanism, and that was luckily, that was not included in, in this version of the bill. So, um, that is a win. I just want to make sure we're, we're all aware of that.
Let me again, what, what's the new revenue?
Uh, it's through, uh, for oral nicotine products, um, which I believe are like, um.
Is that two?
It's in, it's like. Yeah.
Chew packet.
Yeah.
As in contrasted to flavored tobacco?
As composed as.
There are flavored chew tobacco products, I think, that are.
I just think it's interesting to think, well, and again, a new revenue on wildfire prevention on something that.
It's pretty unrelated, right? Yeah, yeah, but, I mean, um.
Okay, one more slide.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Four minutes.
Go ahead.
I'll be really quick and just mention the couple of bills that did not pass that are on our radar for potential conversations in the interim and going into the short session in terms of whether we may want to make them, uh, legislative priority. House Bill 2168, which would have provided ongoing funding for the septic loan program that DEQ operates. That bill did not make it over the finish line this session, so we are checking in with DEQ to understand what that financial picture looks like for them. Um, House Bill 3527 would have provided funding for, uh, water and sewer repair assistance. That bill's been around a couple sessions and did not pass, and, um,
That bill's been around a couple of sessions and did not pass. And then finally Senate Bill 91, I just was going to flag. There is a bill that did prohibit fire departments from using firefighting foam containing PFAS that did pass. However, there were, there was language removed from the bill that would have funded safe disposal, responsible disposal of those products and the legacy PFAS. So that's another issue. There will be kind of an ongoing conversation in the interim, but I think the bill would have not made it over the finish line if it had the fiscal impact attached to it. With that, I'll turn it over to Erin.
For in sum, what are we doing next? Apparently the work does not stop. Yes, apparently if someone could just advance the slides.
Oh, yeah, sure.
There are five key things that we're going to have to do moving forward because we don't just get to stop ever. Obviously, there's a lot of new bills, there's not new rules. We're going to work with our departments, subject matter experts to engage where necessary and keep your board apprised of when we do that. We have to start planning for 2026 now. The.
We can't.
Exactly. We got the whole Fourth of July. It was great. So we'll, we're contemplating how to bring that process forward to your board to start developing a smaller, more targeted 2026 agenda. As Carly mentioned, there is a possible special session also included in that. And in the interim schedule is the potential for the emergency board to meet and they have an allocation of funding that they can then allocate out. If they so decide in consultation with the leadership to start spending that money now, or they could wait until after the short session. Which is also another opportunity for budget adjustments. And then finally, just to keep your board aware, we just, I just found the interim schedule today. So it was published, the 2026 session will of course start on February 2nd. So we have some time. The Capitol building itself is closed right now. So interim days aren't until the end of September and we'll see if they even have a space to do that in. Given the way their project has not been like one of our facility run projects on time and on budget. But there is a bill introduction deadline of November 21st. So we have some time as we consider what we want to do next with our coalition, our caucus. And seeing as I have 30 seconds left, are there any further questions that we can answer later?
I would like to add a bubble. And that is the follow-up with, from the long session 2025 with the Washington County legislators. And because I didn't say it before, the reason why I'm thinking we need to consider that as part of the subsequent outreach strategy. A letter from the board as one of the ideas is in order to give them the context, continued context of how their actions. Relate to additional mandates, underfunding, and have just put us in a terrible bind, continue to put us in a terrible bind. And we can't keep operating this way. And trying to continue setting the stage towards that 2027 long session when you'll have different board members.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we will definitely work on that process. And as part of that, we will also do that conversation we promised to have with you about how much more engagement there was in 2025 from your board, which we are deeply thankful for as a team. We cannot do it without you. We cannot be as effective without your voices in, in the hallways and with members. So with that, thank you all very much and good evening.
Thank you. Carly, you have unfinished business. All right, that brings us to the end of today's work session. We are not going to be doing board and leadership communication. We'll just have to take advantage. Hello, everybody. We need to, we'll need to take advantage of email opportunities and go from there. So without further ado, we are hereby adjourned.
Have all the kisses.
Thank you.